Well, it is September the 2nd, 2003. It's good to be home again. That's what Dr. World used to say, uh, at the opening of every rock of ages. It's good to be home again. Very cool. Well, I wanted to look at chapter four of Take a Stand for God: The Capacity to Lead. We are His, He is ours, the honesty of leadership. Just a great book, a great chapter in this book called Take a Stand for God. And we're gonna be in chapter twenty-one of Second Kings. In chapter twenty-one of Second Kings, we have a record of a king by the name of Manasseh. He got to the royal succession because of the death of his father. He was only twelve years old when he began to reign. So you know, he did not make the decisions. He must've had men positioned similar to what we have in our government of Secretary of State, or so, or so on, who did it for him. He did not do it himself, but as he got older, he must have, because he reigned fifty-five years in Jerusalem. That would make him sixty-seven when he died. By the time he got to be twenty or twenty-one at least, he should've begun to make some decisions during the balance of those fifty-five years. Second Kings twenty-one, verses one and two. Manasseh was twelve years old when he began to reign and reigned fifty and five years in Jerusalem. And his mother's name was Hefseba. And he did that which was evil in the sight of the Lord, as of the abominations of the heathen whom the Lord had cast out before the children of Israel. Now this is what he did. Verse three. He built up again the high places. The high places were where the altars and the stocks were. He rebuilt all of those, which Hezekiah, his father, had destroyed. And he reared, raised up altars for Baal, or Baal, and made a grove. The grove was just like a stockpile of gods. Here would be God number one, here's God number two, here's God number three. Which one do you want to pray to? As did Ahab, king of Israel, and worshiped all the hosts of heaven and served them. The host of heaven is talking about the stars. It is astrological worship. Boy, that's pretty. Not the host of heaven. As far as worshiping. Okay. I was thinking about, no, never mind. The host of heaven is talking about the stars. It is astrological. Let us look at chapters seventeen and twenty-three. So Second Kings seventeen, sixteen. Seventeen, sixteen. For those of you that would like to review this chapter, it is again, it's chapter four, The Capacity to Lead, in the book Take a Stand for God by Dr. Victor Paul Werwell, published by the European Christian Press, which I understand is still available to purchase books from there. And they left all the commandments of the Lord, their God, and made them molten images, even two calves, and made a grove, and worshiped all the hosts of heaven, and served Baal. Second Kings twenty-three now, verse five. And he put down the idolatrous priests, whom the kings of Judah had ordained to burn incense in the high places, in the cities of Judah, and in the places round about Jerusalem, them also that burned incense unto Baal, to the sun, and to the moon, and to the planets, and to all the hosts of heaven. The planets here refers to the signs of the zodiac, the constellations. Second Kings twenty-one, four. So we're back to twenty-one. And he built altars in the house of the Lord, of which the Lord said, in Jerusalem, will I put my name. He built them even in the house of the Lord. Instead of having the true Lord's name, they introduced other things into the temple. At one place would've been an altar for Baal, at another, an altar for another god, somewhere else, an altar for someone else. Verse five. Reminds me of the Roman Catholic Church. And he built altars for all the hosts of heaven in the two courts of the house of the Lord. What a desecration. You have to really have come to a low state to do this kind of thing. Verse six. And he made his son pass through the fire, that is, firewalking, and observed times, and used enchantments, and dealt with familiar spirits, seances. Just recently, in a religious publication, I read where they had made the statement that there is no minister who could serve adequately unless he had some spiritualist who has contact with the other world to help him. The handwriting is on the wall. How do you like that, Anthony? And wizards. He brought much, he wrought much wickedness in the sight of the Lord to provoke him to anger. The word Lord is Jehovah, the true God in relation to his people. He was wanting to bless his people. And what were his people doing? They were kicking him right in the face. They were doing just the opposite. And yet he was their covenant relationship god. He wanted to help them, but the people refused to be helped. So what could God do about it? He just had to wait until they suffered it out. And finally got back to their senses. It may take fifty years. It may take a hundred, because the true God cannot possess. Verses seven through nine. Of course, um, Steve, also, you gotta remember, there's a difference in administration too. But there are other things to work there in that record of witnessing twice or continuing to speak. Witnessing is one thing, speaking the word to believers is another thing. There's a lot of stuff. So you just have to keep your details sharp. You can't blanket them. Verse seven through nine. And he set a graven image of the grove that he had made in the house, of which the Lord said to David and to Solomon, his son, in this house and in Jerusalem, which I have chosen out of all tribes of Israel, will I put my name forever. Neither will I make the feet of Israel move any more out of the land which I gave their fathers, only if they, only if they will observe to do, according to all that I have commanded them, and according to all the law that my servant Moses commanded them. But they hearkened not, did not listen. And Manasseh seduced them. This is spiritual seduction. Manasseh the king seduced them. So Manasseh had a few things going on. Well, we know that from all that idolatry, don't we? To do more evil than did the nations, the heathens, the Gentiles, whom the Lord destroyed before the children of Israel. In front of them, you know, before them. No twig will ever rise any higher than the leadership. No branch, no limb, nothing. The leadership has to set God's word. When you give on the word, you die. As a leader, you are responsible to God for your leadership. You are responsible to God. You, as a leader, determine what happens in that meeting. If they do not like it, it does not make any difference, as long as you and God have got it together and you are right on. But you have got to be right on. It does not make any difference whether the people say yes or no. You have got to be right on. I know a lot of times we have coffee and cookies, et cetera, after a fellowship. But I have also seen where coffee and cookies become more important than God's word, then that word will not live. As far as I'm concerned, if you have no one more than just you, you start on time with the twig meeting. If four people come through late, you say, hi, come on, sit down. Then you go right back to the word. When you teach, make it God's word. Then make it available to minister to them and have them share abundantly, so they keep that vein, that lifeline, open to God. The leadership is so important, and it is in the twig, that this leadership has got to be. Of course, the twig was what the Way Ministry used to call fellowships. We just called it fellowships. We haven't started calling them twigs, I don't know if we will. If you can dynamically lead a twig, you're gonna have two twigs pretty soon. And when you have two, you're pretty soon gonna have three and so on. That is the way it ought to work. It, it is really a trick many times, because there may be four others in my twig, and we really like each other. And we have got such a closeness that I do not want to invite someone else to come. We do not want to break the beauty of our fellowship. This fellowship is so sweet that we do not want anybody else to break into this sweetness. Let us look at something else. If we go out, the five of us, and we get five others to come, now we've got ten. Then we go out and get five more, now we've got fifteen. In our twig, we build the word, and we build the word. We get five more, and now we've got twenty. With twenty, we cannot seat them anymore in our meeting room. So now we go downtown and we rent a bigger room, because we do not want the twigs split, because it is so homey and nice that we all wanna stay. You've gotta split twigs deliberately. You plan, you think, you work. You, as a leader, know how God's word is to be moved, so you deliberately split. As much as I want, may want, one particular person to stay in the twig where I'm the leader, I say, why don't you go and you take along these others and you get other people? To another, I would say, why don't you go and you take these others with you and you get that new twig rolling? I will stay with the new people that have more or less just gotten introduced to God's word. Then I keep what is called, in the senses world, the weaker spiritual babes, and the others take the stronger ones and build. This ministry can live on splitting. That is the only way it will live. And the splitting of the twigs is life. And as the twigs split, the beauty of God's word lives. Deliberately plan to split them, and just do not cater to people because you like them. In the organized systems of the denominations, there are graduated positions of prestige. When you start in, you start with a little church. If you're a good boy and you behave yourself and you play the right politics and move in the proper channels, then three years later, they move you up to a bigger church. And that is how the machinery rolls. One of the things I have to admire about my stepdad was that he really refused to play those politics in the church. Consequently, they never really gave him anything. He continued to give. And continued to teach and continued to work. And he worked really hard. Tremendous man. Just as wonderful as any of the others, but he just drew the line at a lot of the things that they wanted him to do. He saw the word differently on some issues like grace. I think they wore him down after a while, uh, on that, where he didn't have it quite as firm as he had it when he was younger. But he really, they really didn't, uh, it's just 'cause he refused to compromise on that. I believe that the more ability you have and the more highly trained you are, and the more that you are walking on God's word, the more you ought to go down rather than up. The strongest men and women are needed to go down to the weakest points, to the great deserts of human need to build God's word. The only problem you have got is the head trip of, I wanna be branch leader, I wanna be limb leader. It does not work that way if you love God, verses ten and eleven. And the Lord spake by his servants the prophets, saying, because Manasseh, king of Judah, hath done these abominations, and hath done wickedly above all that the Amorites did, which were before him, and hath made Judah also to sin with his idols. Doing wickedly above all that the Amorites did is pretty bad, verse twelve. Therefore thus saith the Lord God of Israel, behold, I am bringing such an evil upon Jerusalem and Judah, that whosoever heareth of it, both his ears shall tingle. It will not just be one ear tingling, it'll be both. It might not be the only thing tingling. Verses thirteen through sixteen. And I will stretch over Jerusalem the line of Samaria and the plummet of the house of Ahab. And I will wipe Jerusalem as a man wipes a dish, wiping it and turning it upside down. See, they used to do dishes back then. And I will forsake the remnant of mine inheritance and deliver them into the hand of their enemies, and they shall become a prey and a spoil to all their enemies, because they have done evil in my sight and have provoked, provoked me to anger since the day their fathers came forth out of Egypt, even unto this day. Moreover, Manasseh shed innocent blood very much, till he had filled Jerusalem from one end to the other, to another, beside his sin wherewith he made Judah to sin in doing evil in the sight of the Lord. So, of course, the apostles filled Jerusalem with their doctrine. This fellow filled Jerusalem with blood. And let us look at another record in the book of Joshua. Joshua twenty-four. Verse one, Joshua, twenty-four one. And Joshua gathered all the tribes of Israel to shikam, and called for the elders of Israel, and for their heads, and for their judges, and for their officers. And they presented themselves before God. It was Joshua who did the calling, but when they came according to Joshua's word and appeared there, God's word says they presented themselves before God. They presented themselves before God, but it was Joshua who did the calling. What follows is a fantastic historical record in abbreviated form. It is one of the greats, a synopsis. Verses two through twelve. And Joshua said unto all the people, thus saith the Lord God of Israel. Wow. What, where are you? Verse two. That's what I said. Your fathers dwelt on the other side of the flood in old time. But he started off with thus saith the Lord God of Israel. That tells you something, doesn't it? Revelation. Your fathers dwelt on the other side of the flood in old time, even Tira or Terah, the father of Abraham and the father of nature. And they served other gods. And I took your father Abraham from the other side of the flood and led him throughout all the land of Canaan, and multiplied his seed and gave him Isaac. And I gave unto Isaac Jacob and Esau. And I gave unto Esau Mount Seir to possess it. But Jacob and his children went down into Egypt. I sent Moses also in Aaron, and I plagued Egypt according to that which I did among them. And afterward I brought you out. And I brought your fathers out of Egypt, and ye came unto the sea, and the Egyptians pursued after your fathers with chariots and horsemen unto the Red Sea. And when they cried unto the Lord, he put darkness between you and the Egyptians, the cloud by day, and brought the sea upon them, and covered them. And your eyes have seen what I have done in Egypt. And ye dwelt in the wilderness a long season. And I brought youth into the land of the Amorites, which dwelt on the other side Jordan. And they fought with you, and I gave them into your hand, that ye might possess their land, and I destroyed them from before you. Then Balak, the son of Zipor, king of Moab, arose and warred against Israel, and sent and called Balaam, the son of Beor, to curse you. But I would not hearken unto Balaam. Therefore he blessed you still. So I delivered you out of his hand. And ye went over Jordan, came unto Jericho, and the men of Jericho fought against you, the Amorites and the Perizzites, and the Canaanites, and the Hittites, and the Gergishites, the Hivites, and the Jebusites. And I delivered them into your hand. That could be a song. It does. How do you like that with Balaam? See, here's where people get tricked, tripped up. I didn't really get into this in the advanced class, but like we have this thing. I guess I'll read that this morning, if I have the time. Not this one, the next one. We have this thing where this fella over in Tampa is over there teaching really whacked-out spiritualism stuff in fellowships now. Over there. I'm sure he'll be over here soon with the fellowships here that just wanna stay. That aren't pushing the foundational class. You don't push the foundational class, your butt is toast. But here's Balaam, see? Balaam's a man of God, he's a prophet. And when he receives revelation from the true God, is it accurate? But in his heart and his life, he is wanting to make a buck off of God's people being destroyed. This is amazing when you think about it. So could someone be born again of God's spirit? Be taught how to receive revelation? Receive revelation at times and minister healing to someone, they get healed, right? After he's done with that, now his mind's open to devil spirits and everything he says is devilish. You understand? Of course, all you gotta do is turn on the TV and you see this back and forth thing plenty of times. Sometimes it's not even the true God in the healing, the ministry. Other times it is. This is just the grace and mercy of God, because God still would want his people blessed, healed, delivered, even if it's by some copped-out, freaked-out, half-the-time possesso. But where God's people get tricked is they look and they go, oh, well, there's someone who's operating the power of God, ministering healing, whatever. So everything he says must be right. That is backwards, get your butt kicked, spiritually go down the tubes logic. The logic has to be, hey, that's the accuracy of the word. And then God confirms his word. The Lord backs up his word with signs following, not the other way around. That was happening in the Way Ministry too, and Craig, once his heart tried to stem that tide, and he wasn't able to do it. 'Cause you don't stem it by just screaming at the top of your lungs and legislating, 'cause now you're just a part of the problem with legalism. But he saw it and he did, you know, you see a lot of that in what he taught, where people were searching, looking for signs, searching after signs. Well, we're not seeing enough signs. You know, Dr. World taught, hey, I'm believing that as the word grows in people's hearts, we'll see more signs, miracles, and wonders. There are others in the ministry that wanted to put the signs, miracles, and wonders first. He taught us in the advanced class, the first advanced class I took in residence. I think it was. Was it the first one in residence, or was it my graduation year? Right now, I don't remember which one it was. I think it was the first one. Ah, I don't remember. Anyways. I remember in that advanced class, Dr. World talking about how everything he's seen in the world, as far as regards to ministries, is lopsided. They're all about healing. Or they're all about the deliverance ministry, they call it. Or they're all about, you know, the prosperity ministry. Or they're all about this, or they're all about that. All lopsided. He says, I could've done the healing ministry. He couldn't. And you just go and, all you do is meetings for healing, meetings where you heal, meetings where you heal. But he says, I just wanted to stay with the centrality of God's word. He talked about that over and over and over again. I guess people didn't really understand what he meant, when he would say the centrality of God's word. Well, that the word is at the center and we stay, just, it's the word. The word is what we push. God did not magnify the manifestations above all his name, did he? It doesn't say that, does it? It says he magnified his what? Word above all his name. And boy, the only thing, even though we've been small up to now, thank God that to the best of my ability and our ability, those who are involved in our ministry, we have endeavored to keep the word first, the word at the center. You know, we haven't been sidetracked by TV. Where the TV is so important now, and well, make sure you don't say this, 'cause that'll offend someone. But well, it's, it's the word. Well, but you don't wanna offend anyone. You know, we really made some moves, even with the not, not being a pro, for profit, or a, whatever it is. Not-for-profit or nonprofit, not being a five oh one C three. That was done deliberately. Because we got to see what happened in the Way Ministry. And we got to see, we even get to see what happened to Pastor Kennedy. Wherever he was, he's below that now spiritually. 'Cause as he started to wanna back men who, at least to his way of thinking and believing, were, um, had, were standing according to principles of God's word, the government said, we take away your tax exempt status. Just keep yakking, just keep wanting to back people that wanna talk about God. And one day, you'll have to be announced to your congregation that all they're giving will not give them any tax benefits. Well, you know what? Let me tell you right now. All you're giving will not give you any tax benefits. Other than you get a certain percentage, you get to, you can give to anyone. You can give to the corner drugstore, you can give to a frog, you can throw it in the ocean, you can burn it in your fireplace. I'll tell you something else. I don't really give a crap about tax benefits. There are a lot of ways to get tax benefits without trying to squeeze them out of God. I know it's an additional benefit, I mean, I understand that. But it puts you in a situation where the government basically at any time can tell you what to say and what to do, and what you can't do, and who you can't back, and who you can back. So, the word, the word, nothing wrong with having tax benefits. But, and doing stuff to get tax benefits, I, nothing wrong. But the word, the word, the word, see? Look, our God's so big, he can give us enough money to pay taxes too. He can stick it in a fish's mouth if he wants. Or show you the right fish, or the right piece of land, about it, they're gonna put a freeway through the next day. Or the next week or something. We bought a house where they put a freeway through. It was a wonderful day when they finally put that stoplight so everyone I could walk across our home. Oh, huh? Working it, working it. You saw it coming, huh?
Right away.
No, they did put a road through it, so. Well, I think that's, I think that's biblical, isn't it?
That's devilish. Devils in the Bible.
So then they don't give so much.
Boy, if you're given to, for tax benefits, look, figure out another way. Buy some real estate. Buy cash though, no debt. Well, then again, if you're given to give tax benefits, buy whatever damn way you want to, 'cause it doesn't make any difference, you're not doing anything for God or yourself spiritually. Do whatever you like. Verse, page forty-three, the word. The word, the word, the word. Centrality of the word. We're not off on a tangent. The word is our tangent. That's, see? Right? Right?
Right.
Right.
Now, that's three of us.
Right.
Okay, there we go.
That's in my heart. So it's there.
And I sent the hornet before you, which drave them out from before you, even the two kings of the Amorites, but not with thy sword, nor with thy bow. There's a note, uh, somewhere that these hornets were marauders, everyone. I know we think about them as, we were excited one time that these were literally hornets. But I didn't get that note from Dr. World, so I don't know if that's true. No, I think that was a bullander saying that. That would be neat to work, to see if that use of hornet was a figure of speech, meaning, you know, like a bunch of raiders and marauders came through and attacked these other people for the benefit of Israel. Don't know. We do know that, uh, God did that, that type of thing in Egypt. I love the word. It is fantastic. Can you imagine God using a bunch of hornets to defeat an army? He did. So, there you have it. Verses thirteen through fifteen. And I have given you a land for which ye did not labor. Ooh, then again, when you think about those hornets that Mark saw, how big were they, Steve?
Like, two, three inches in length and like about an inch and a half diameter. And their stands were like two inches. So Japan.
And they could kill you, from what I understand.
Kill you and sound like helicopters.
That would be funny. Here comes, you know, the copters are coming in. What's that sound? I don't know. I don't know.
And then the wolf comes in.
That Killer Bee, Scarlett.
They've been coming since the seventies, them Killer Bees.
Yeah, what are they getting with them? They're not till after we get out of here. Anyway. And I have given you a land for which ye did not labor, and cities which ye built not, and ye dwell in them, and of vineyards and olive yards which ye planted not. Do you, look at that. You got cities you didn't, land you didn't labor for, cities you didn't build. What about real estate you didn't build? Vineyards, olive yards, and olive yards, that's a big deal, isn't it? Both vineyards and olive yards. Doesn't it take a while for an olive tree to get where it really produces good olives? where it really produces good olives?
Sure, and it takes a while for that maturity to happen, and also produce the olives that are just right, and then the years after that, very old trees, some of them.
Same thing with vineyards, right?
Yeah, and they're very prolific on top of it. Hardly, it's right up there, all over the place. Once they start going, they're...
Look at all the oil you get from olives. Olive oil.
Olive oil.
Olive oil.
Extra virgin.
Extra virgin olive. Yeah. There you go.
And a lot of Italians come out.
Hey!
Spanish, Greek olive oil from Italy.
That's it. "Olive-yards which ye planted, do, which ye planted, not do ye eat..." "I have given you." Boy, I love that, right? Wouldn't he do the same for us? I don't know, because, "It's Christians, we're too beaten down." "Now therefore fear, reverence, or respect the Lord, and serve him in sincerity and in truth, in truthful sincerity, and put away the gods which your fathers served on the other side of the flood and in Egypt; and serve ye only the Lord. And if it seem evil unto you to serve the Lord, then choose you this day whom ye will serve, whether the gods which your fathers served, that were on the other side of the flood, or the gods of the Amorites, in whose land ye dwell." Yeah, if it seems evil, you know? If serving the Lord seems like a bad idea to you? After all this stuff I just, you know, He gave you? If that's bad, you know? See, if they're honest, they'd go, "You know what, Lord? We don't wanna serve you, so here go, you can have the olive-yards back, you can have them, you can have this, you can have that." That's honest. Well, you know, God, you know, you know what? You can take this breath back that I just breathed. "You choose, but as for me and my house, we will serve the Lord." That is quite a record. Before anything happened to God's people, He told them, "I do not believe anything negative can happen to you without God first telling you that it is going to happen." I've been teaching that for years. 'Cause I learned it from Dr. Earl. "Here, Joshua, that's why have you choo..." Well, what did you do? Well, what, you know, what thought did you, you know? Remember, what did he tell you? "Here, Joshua was giving, Joshua was giving them the history of the background of their deliverance, and he said, 'Now, you have got to make up your minds whether you wanna worship those gods of those other nations or the Lord.'" Verse sixteen through twenty. "And the people answered and said, 'God forbid that we should forsake the Lord to serve other gods.'" "Oh, no, 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 no." "What was that?" "Yeah, yeah." "For the Lord, for the Lord our God, He it is that brought us up and our fathers out of the land of Egypt, from the house of bondage, and which did those great signs in our sight, and preserved us in all the way when we went, and among all the people through whom we passed; and the Lord drew out from before us all the people, even the Amorites, which dwelt on the land. Therefore, we will, will we also serve the Lord, for He is our God.'" "And Joshua said to the people, 'You cannot serve the Lord. You can't do it, for He is an holy God, sanctified, set apart.'" See, He's set apart. He's holy, pure, all that. He's not like these other gods, all mixed in with nature and gods and everything. "Let me worship this tape player." "Oh, yes, oh, God." "Let me worship this frog." "Eh, rock, tree, planet, star, water." "Fire, water, earth, and dung," or something. He's a jealous God. What's that mean? He don't like it if you're worshiping any other gods. Certain gods, "Oh, it's okay." Why? Because if you worship any other god, you're worshiping Satan anyway. So you can worship this one, and that one, and this one, and that one, you're still worshiping Satan. So he's just perfectly happy with that. The true God is not. You worship the true God, period. Or he's not happy with you. So you know what the Christian church today thinks? Well, we're gonna worship God, and Jesus is God, and the Holy Spirit is God, and most of them, and Mary is God, and Saint Christopher is God, some kinda little god, though. And this one is God, and that one is God.
Peter and Paul.
Peter and Paul and Mary. Rock groups, anything, whatever. You know what? In Santeria, they're more honest. Voodoo is more honest. You know what they say? "Hey, you're just worshiping statues." Well, we can worship this little Barbie doll head. That little Zephyr Hills water bottle, they'll worship that. They have these little places where you can get doll parts, doll heads, where you can go there, get one, put it on your counter, worship it. People think it's just a little doll. And people have houses full of dolls, and angels, and all kinds of things, that they're worshiping, that they're giving allegiance to, service to. So they say, "Look, you worship all that stuff, Roman Catholic Church, which supposedly are Christians, so are there two billion Christians in the world? One point two billion of them are Roman Catholics? Add to that all that, most of the Christian, rest of the so-called Christian church, and you've got the whole body of Christ, worshiping other gods." There's your go-tell, speak, redeeming the time, remember? You know what the intense desire of God is? Worship. Ephesians five, remember? Worship. "The days are evil because of the many gods worshiped, primarily by Christians." They're doing worse than the Amorites. Worse than the Muslims, who at least are worshiping one idol. They call it God, but they're not worshiping God, 'cause the only way you can worship God is through the Lord Jesus Christ, not the God Jesus Christ. So they only have one. We worship, Christians worship at least three. Then start, then most of them worship five, six, ten, twenty. And their priest, and the Pope. "He will not forgive your transgressions nor your sins." Not that one. He's not gonna overlook that, you understand? God would just overlook all kinds of... Well, maybe he teaches that here. He's taught it to me fifty thousand times. I oughta know it by now. I do. Let's see if he teaches it here. If not, just remember why I share with you. Most of the things that people think so important, God could give a crap about. He overlooks it. But this one, he does not overlook. He doesn't just go, "Oh, that's okay. You can worship several gods as long as you love Jesus." Now... "If you forsake the Lord to serve strange gods..." There it is again, serving other gods. "Then he will turn and do you hurt." What does he do? He takes his hand, the blessing off of you. He's got to, 'cause you pulled an Adam and Eve on him. You've said, "Boy, this garden's wonderful, all this fresh fruit." You're talking about organic? Certified by God, organic? No adjectives, if any, God. And they said, "Oh, God, you know what? It's just tiring eating this organic food. It sure is tiring breathing this air that's free of pollution. It's tiring receiving all that revelation from you all the time. Whenever we wanna know something that we can't know by looking at it, you just tell us. It's too much, Lord. We're missing something. The sex is just not good enough." So... You know, Eve gets a little boring after a while, Lord. After all, Lord, she's a woman. She's a weanin' chick.
Yeah.
And Eve goes, "You know, that Adam's okay, but after a while..." He gets on my last nerve, Lord!
And he worked.
"Adam, you're pushing my buttons," you know what?
Look at this garden, clean this place up.
Take those leaves out. Put them over there. And then Adam goes, "Bananas again, Eve? Don't you know how to make anything else?" Oh, boy. Here they are, with land they didn't work for, cities they didn't build, vineyards and olive-yards that they didn't plant. Joshua told them how God had delivered them, how what they had, they had by grace. And he said, "Choose you this day whom ye will serve, if you are gonna serve a strange God, and the true God who deliver you is not gonna be with you." Verses twenty-one and twenty-two. "And the people said unto Joshua, 'Nay, no, sir, but we will serve the Lord.' And Joshua said to the people, 'Ye are witnesses against yourselves that ye have chosen you the Lord to serve Him.' And they said, 'We are witnesses.'" "Yep, yes, sir, mhm, yes, sir." "They said it. They heard it themselves." Verse twenty-three. "Now therefore put away," said he, "the strange gods which are among you, and incline your heart unto the Lord God of Israel." The thing that was beginning to happen was that they were beginning to get infiltrated with the spiritualists a little bit. And so Joshua called the elders of Israel together. He got them to present themselves before God, which was to present themselves before Joshua, so that Joshua could talk to them about God and the things of God. And Joshua simply spelled it out. Joshua, the leader, said, "You have got to put away the strange gods and incline your heart unto the Lord God of Israel. You are witnesses against yourselves." And look what's happening. It had happened, and it started happening already. But now, where there's a fellowship, quote-unquote from Dr. Rarrell, and here's the great disgusting filthy thing out of one of these buttholes mouths. Oh, this was the stuff Dr. Rarrell was gonna teach, but he just didn't get around to it. I'd like to find that man and spit in his face for promulgating that lie about the man of God that taught me the Word of God, your grandfather and the Word. That he taught you, he was waiting to teach you spiritualism? To worship more than one God?
I'm not trying to read it all.
Did I read you this letter from Adam?
No, uh, Sophia read it in the car.
You heard it.
No, I mean, we didn't share the text.
Oh, okay, that's it. I think Anthos, you've trained Chuck to speak for you now.
Yeah, well, every...
God tells Anthos. Anthos told Chuck, and Chuck tells the people.
I'm taking over for every.
Anthos just points, and Chuck goes, "You want some more soda?"
I'm working on it.
This is from Edward, after the advanced class. "Hey, bro, things are well. Jalen and I have been getting up at five and going over the prayer list and getting into the Word. It's been challenging some mornings, but we have been doing it. We are working on days we can have fellowship, and I'm looking for a new job that will have that flexibility and meet our needs. I also wanted to know about the stock, blah, blah, blah. I also sent you what the fellowship up here is teaching. It is some crazy shit." This is his words. "They sent it to us in email. Jalen went once while I was gone, and they taught it. When I got home, I had the reminder of the basics we learned, and quote, 'What does the Word say,' end of quote. And then it was clear to her, it was off, and he capitalized, "off." "O-F-F. I wanted you to read it so as to be aware of another of Satan's tricks in case we meet believers who have had this teaching. Thanks for remaining faithful. God bless." And Edward, Jalen say hi to all. Thanks for remaining faithful. That line in here, I appreciate it more than any of them because... That's why we have anything, whatever you wanna call this thing, whatever it is we have, is because of faithfulness or the accuracy of the Word. Of course, God's grace and mercy is what has allowed us to be faithful. Or if I read this Anthos, it would read like, uh, like one of the books you used to read years ago. That, but it's so subtle. It's such a, it's even a direct attack on our ministry, 'cause it's such a fine line between what we've handled with people and what they've handled, and what they're handling. You'd have to be just sharp to tell the counterfeit here, it's that slick. That slick. Uh-uh, won't be able to get through this. Spiritualism. Yeah, just a little bit. So... You gotta put away the strange gods. You don't need a lucky rabbit's foot. Yeah, what would you do with it? Throw it at the walls of Jericho? "Oh, here, Joshua, we don't need to march around seven times. I have this lucky rabbit's foot." Watch this. It's more so than that. It's... Okay, just like we marched around Jericho those seven times? Here's something I found out. You know, whenever you want such-and-such to happen, just walk around that thing seven times. And if you do it on the seventh day of the seventh hour of the seventh month, it's even more powerful. Really? Yeah, remember the thing Joshua taught? He showed us about the seven? Seven. You gotta watch that number seven. Oh, wow. That's right, seven. It was, it was seven, wasn't it? Yeah, it was seven. Now, you know how many men he took out with him that day he went? How many? Thirteen. Thirteen? Yeah, now thirteen is seven plus six. Seven plus six. You betcha. Taking revelation that occurred once for a specific situation and expanding that out to every kinda situation, you just end up in spiritualism. Verses twenty-four through twenty-eight. "And the people said unto Joshua, 'The Lord our God, we will serve; and His voice, will we, excuse me, will we serve, and His voice, will we obey.'" So Joshua made a covenant with the people that day, and set them a statue and an ordinance and shekhem. "And Joshua wrote these words in the book of the law of God, and took a great stone, and set it up there under an oak that was by the sanctuary of the Lord. And Joshua said unto all the people, 'Behold, this stone shall be a witness unto us, for it hath heard all the words of the Lord which he spake unto us. It shall be therefore a witness unto you.'"